Good evening. Welcome to the business meeting of Florence City Council. You please stand. We pray for the wisdom to make decisions that are beneficial to the people represented here. Empower us to speak honestly, vote wisely, and vote with intent. We thank you, God, tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Wingo.
President.
Ms. Chambers.
Here.
Mr. Winn.
Here.
Ms. Whalen.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Ms. Cable.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
We have approval of the minutes of the April 8th, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Whalen, second by Mr. Schneider. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'd like to call upon Seth Cutter from the Vice President of Public Affairs from Cincinnati Northern Kentucky International Airport. I believe he is going to introduce our new CEO for CBG.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. It is an honor to introduce to you, one of the very first councils, elected bodies, to meet our new CEO. So, as many of you know, Candace McGraw, who's been our CEO for several years, has retired as of this year, and Larry Crowder is our new CEO. So I'll defer to him for a few remarks.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Great to be here. Great to meet you all in person. The mayor provided me with the community guide. And as I was reflecting on it, I saw this honoring our past and shaping our future, which I think is a great theme. I would just add one word to that, which is "together." And the value of our partnerships, very, very important to us at CBG. And I'm excited to be here tonight in partnership with mayor, council, and the team here at the city of Florence. As I have heard from a number of people, including the mayor, I have big shoes to fill. Candace has done a remarkable job with the team with positioning the airport for success. Candace and I have been longtime friends and colleagues, so the transition has gone very smoothly and continues to go very well. I'm looking forward to being a great partner with all of you and continuing the climb, as I like to say, that we're engaged in at CBG as a regional economic engine. I've been a well-experienced airport executive for over 37 years and, again, in service to communities around the country. Candace and I went up together in leadership in our respective trade organizations on the airport side. So, again, looking forward to finishing the transition and, of course, working with all of you. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening.
Thank you, Larry. And I think you all were talking about, just for reference, that the airport has about, how many employees that have badges through their...
16,000.
16,000 employees. And your economic impact is about 55,000 jobs.
55,000 jobs. It was just recently updated by NKU at $10.5 billion in annual economic impact to the region.
So having an airport nearby is not only a convenience, but it is definitely a driver for economic development. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Which, Mayor, that's a perfect segue into, we have prepared for you all, members of council and the public, a brief update on things happening at the airport. And as we tee that up... Oh, maybe I can do that. Oh, no. We'll run through some of those numbers. We also, you know, in addition to keeping you all regularly updated, it's been a while since I've been here. I will be leaving CBG in a month. So this is my last council meeting to present updates. And then it's Larry's show, so he'll take it away. He already knows, as he just proved, all the updates. If you... Josh, if you just go to the full screen, hit View there, and we'll go full screen, and that should pop up larger. Or we can just go through it here. Yep, I think that's the one. And full screen. Okay, so we'll just bump through this really quickly because I know you all have a packed agenda. You may not like me, so I'll just tell you to go on ahead. Real quick, in terms of how we ended last year, mayor and council members, a great year for the airport, as was mentioned. We already hit on some of those badge numbers, but we finally, the top line there, we finally finished, Mayor, as you noted, kind of our bread and butter, why we exist. In terms of passenger throughput, providing commercial air service for this region, finally got back to pre-pandemic levels. So 9.2 million exceeds, passengers exceeds our 2019 levels. So we're very proud to be back kind of in that pre-pandemic number. Obviously, the cargo presence of the airport, you can see they're the seventh largest in North America. That is something I think is not unknown to anybody in the city of Florence. We'll talk about that and its impact in a minute. A quick kind of asterix on the 16,000 badge employees. When we look at just the main city of Florence zip code, there are about 1,340, as of our last count, badge holders of that total number that are residents of the city of Florence. So as much as we are a regional entity, we are obviously employing a lot of our friends and neighbors, and that economic activity is paramount to us, which leads to that last figure that Larry shared in terms of our economic impact. We can look to the next slide here. For those who don't know, right, we always kind of compare ourselves to Florence. Maybe, you know, that's a good comparison in terms of friends aspire to be like one another. And we always talk about our land size. So we're actually one of the top 10, or top, yeah, top 10 largest airports in the country by land size with over 7,000 acres, which we always say is roughly on par with how much the size, land size of the city. But, of course, most of our operation is dedicated to the airfield, four runways. People ask a lot of the time there on the far right, how much of your business is cargo versus passenger? We measure that or kind of report out on landed weight. How much of your landed weight is dedicated from one to the other? And it's about a 65-35 split there, as you see. And then, of course, our operating budget, and the real key here is our billion dollars in capital investment over the next five years that we'll talk about in a minute. So we can look at the spider map here, right? This is one of the things we're most proud of in terms of providing passenger air service to the region. Not only the dots on the map, but kind of the logos on the side, right? And since I, we last came and shared updates with you all, we've added logos to the side, right? British Airways started, Breeze Airways has begun service. Even for those of you or friends and family who do not fly a low-cost carrier, the benefit to the community is those carriers coming on top of legacy airlines like Delta or United, American, create competition for your business and drive down the average airfares, right? So that's how we've transitioned from a very high cost in terms of airfare airport to one that is top in our region and offers families a great price point to get to where they want to be. So looking at the next slide, just a little further note on that BA service because I often see it when I'm like coming home at night, passing through the city of Florence, seeing the nice 787 Dreamliner flying over the city. You all have seen it as well. That flight has done very well since it launched in June 2023. It's vital for our business community. It's vital from an economic development perspective. But importantly, it adds that second transatlantic flight to the airport's lineup. Delta continues to do very well with its Paris flight and BA as well now on the London service. We'll go ahead and flip to the next one. In terms of cargo, I mentioned this, right, DHL and Amazon. Again, that's where a lot of our economic, or our employment growth has taken place over the last, really, 10 years. But you all know we're one of three global super hubs through DHL, more than 65 base aircraft, huge piece of the business. They're growing and expanding, as many of you have seen, building a new hangar on their leasehold. And then Amazon Air continues to do, to do well in terms of its network and its investment, which has already eclipsed $1.5 billion. So we'll go to the next slide because the spinoff, well, before I go to the spinoff, you can see there kind of similarly on the passenger side, cargo is a little bit different. Obviously, you can't book a flight from here to Louisville, but you can get a sense of kind of the nationwide, domestic, US continental map in terms of where we're flying from a cargo perspective, where all those aircraft are going. And if you look at the next slide, this is kind of the look at the global map, right? And a lot of people, I think, are always surprised to see Asian markets on there, like Tokyo, Bahrain. Obviously, dots all over Europe as well. And a lot of, a lot of this, most of this is attributable to DHL's network, where Amazon primarily serves a domestic market. So in terms of the spinoff, looking at the next slide, this is, I think, what we like to focus on and are very proud of, a map that many of you have seen before. But you can see just kind of how much the passenger facilities there are kind of to the north of the campus. And then, obviously, DHL and Amazon have big, big footprints down at the south end of our footprint. And then, most of our airport property that comes into the city are those smaller yellow buildings that you all know are one of Bosch's buildings, the Wayfair facility, GE Aerospace in the, in the city proper. But some of the development projects, as I mentioned, DHL number 15 there, just adjacent and south of DHL's footprint, that's where they're expanding onto 50 acres. We're making headwinds on this project we're calling Hangar Row in terms of additional maintenance, repair, operation. What are the things in the life cycle of aircraft that could benefit by being co-located to these major footprints that DHL, Amazon, and others are building? And that's where we're really focused in our economic development efforts as we go forward. More, 300 acres or so there in Hangar Row. Site 7 is out to the west in Boone County, of course. But Larry and the team were very committed to keeping these projects going because that's what creates jobs for the region. We provide the space, the infrastructure, the support, as Larry mentioned, in terms of partnership for companies, private sector, to come in and make investment, which I know the city is also focused on. So looking at the next slide, you can just see one of those projects, we're soon to open the first building, what we're calling Global Logistics Park, but some ramp spa, or some space that's adjacent to our ramp on the north end of the facility, provides us some additional cargo processing facilities that are not tied to DHL or Amazon, right? So we're trying to diversify that business. And then if you look at the next slide, that'll give you a sense of what Hangar Row could be, right? Building out adjacent to the airfield, these hangars. Last week, we just celebrated L2 Avionics, a company from Texas that opened up in one of the existing facilities nearby to this. And that's the kind of investment we're looking to see. So if we look at the next slide, I promise I'll wrap up here soon. This is going to be a project that's very impactful to all of our passengers, but we're trying to get ahead of that in terms of what we're calling Elevate CBG, right? So of that more-than-billion-dollar capital investment program that we're looking at over the next five years, a large portion of that is dedicated to terminal modernization. So as many of you know, longtime residents of the region, of the city, will know, we're operating in what kind of our old hub facilities were, which were not built for the local passenger, right? They were built for connecting passengers, people getting from gate to gate. Well, now we need more ticket counter. We need more curbs, better utilization of the curb front. We need a larger security checkpoint to serve those 9.2 million passengers, which the overwhelming majority of them are friends and neighbors, our local community, people who begin or end their trip here and not, who are connecting through the airport, right? So we're gonna, we're investing to make sure the physical footprint of the airport matches the community we serve and does that in a very efficient, safe way. We can look at the next slide. I misspoke because the final part, which I'll try to breeze through here of the presentation, I know we often hear from folks in the city about noise, right? It's part of life when you're in a community that lives right near, right to the south of a major international airport. So we'll just breeze through some updates here for you quickly. I think everybody realizes, right, that because of the operation on the cargo side of the house, we run a 24/7 operation in terms of DHL's operation is largely an overnight one, right? The airport, because we use federal dollars, cannot restrict the use of the airfield. We can create preferred approaches. We can work with the community and our partners at the FAA to kind of guide and direct where that traffic is headed. But we can't restrict commerce when we take those federal dollars, right? So we're trying to do more in terms of proactive outreach. We can look at some of the things in the next slide here. In terms of the history, many of you know the history far better than I. But it starts with, especially for those who are most sensitive to noise or most noise-impacted, or for our realtors or folks buying and selling homes, understanding the noise exposure maps, the mitigation programs that we used to have in place but no longer do. At the time, right, when Delta was building out its hub, most of these procedures date back to the early 90s. So they're kind of long-tenured at this point. That's when a lot of the federal dollars were made available to either buy or sound insulate properties. And obviously, understanding how the day-to-day elements of wind and weather can impact noise as well. We'll look at the next piece. So this is our current, I know it says "future" in 2011, but this is still the noise exposure map that we operate out of, or off of, rather. We do have an update pending with the FAA that's been sitting there for a while. But you can see the most noise-sensitive communities are within that first ring, which is the 55 DNL, I believe. The 65 DNL is generally where residential use is incompatible with the airport, and then it balloons on from there. What we'd like to remind the lay viewer of this is just because you don't live within one of those rings does not mean that you're not noise-impacted. It's just those are the most, the highest levels of recorded noise on a 24-hour day-night average level. It's also important to realize, right, different entities at the airport, we, the Airport Authority, Larry is our CEO of the Airport Authority, the board, we have different roles and responsibilities as the airport versus all the other players, right? So air traffic control actually directs, right? Our controllers in the tower, who are federal employees, direct the safe movement of aircraft on the ground, on runways, and in the skies, right? They are looking at wind and weather and make those calls, not the airport. We work with the community to try to facilitate the complaints that we may receive and also work with our partners at the airlines and the tower. And then, of course, we always point to this last bucket in terms of residents and prospective residents, making, educating themselves, making themselves aware of where they are before you sign the dotted line to rent or before you buy a property where, where this property in question is. So one of the projects that's, that was mostly completed last year but is wrapping up this year, our center runway is closed right now. And as you see there from earlier this month through June for the project completion, it was closed for several months, basically latter half of last year. And whenever we close a runway or even taxiways for construction, that has impacts with other runway utilization. So that's why sometimes, a few years ago, when we had our primary east-west runway closed, 927, which is the preferred nighttime-use runway, we had a large uptick in complaints from a noise perspective from Florence and from Delhi to the north because all the traffic had to go either north or south. That east-west runway was an option for six months. So runway closures do impact that. But looking at the next slide, you can kind of get a sense, especially where this is not precise, right? But for each runway, for arrivals, for departures, as aircraft take off and land into the wind, that, we can just kind of cycle through the next ones, there are different procedures for each runway, for different sizes of aircraft, for different times of day, right? So you see daytime, mainline versus narrowbody, and then hopefully we'll get to the nighttime, right? As I said, our, our east-west runway is the primary preferred approach. We're getting to the point where we need other relief valves, if you will, because during peak times, things really build up. So that's why you see some of these other corridors getting things out. Again, as the procedures that were established in the 80s and 90s dictated to try to impact the fewest, the least densely populated areas of our community where we have the fewest number of disturbed households or residents, et cetera. So you can see this chart quickly and map show you kind of where we ended the year last year in terms of noise complaints. They were actually down from 2023. We adjust and kind of control for frequent complainers. But you can see that, obviously, within the city and along the, the north-south approaches, that is where we get a lot of complaints. So we deal with those in terms of emails or through an online system we have, phone calls as well. We can look to the next slide. And we always kind of want to remind folks that we've made investments and a lot of resources available to the community on the internet. So on our website, which there's a QR code for on the next page, you can do real, near-real-time flight tracking. So if something disturbs somebody in the middle of the night, they're like, "That sounded irregular." You can go online, cbgairport.com/noise and directly access kind of that near-real-time flight tracking, make complaints through that, and learn more about everything we just said. We just finished last year kind of a prospective homebuyer guide that consolidates a lot of this information. So if you all have constituents or folks that are like, "This is weird," or "This is out of control," we urge them, "Contact us. Let's talk about it. Let's get you the resources so you can be better educated." So with that, I'll finally, because Josh is going to kill me, I'll finally shut up and be glad to take any questions or get out of the way so you can continue your business.
Anyone have any questions?
I just want to make a statement. Seth, I'm sorry to hear that you're leaving.
It's all good, ma'am.
And it's our loss and their gain, but I appreciate the knowledge that you've brought to this, the, the community involvement you've brought to us, and just your passion for the airport and all things airport-related. So you'll be missed.
Thank you. It's been an honor to work with you all, as Larry said, and mayor, and vice mayor, council members, you know, we have, I look around the room at our public safety professionals whenever. Our team has been in need from a mutual aid perspective. You all are the first ones there. We owe a lot to the city, and I know with new folks coming in, led by Larry, you'll, you're going to be in great hands and continue a great legacy of partnership.
Thank you, Seth.
So thank you all.
All right, we're going to go back to recognition of our Florence Fire EMS personnel. Chief Ren.
Thank you, Mayor Abashan. Tonight, we'd like to welcome Josh Cox and Tony Shabin, our EMS coordinators, and Ms. Betty McGee, who's the Education Department educator, to do a presentation for us.
Thank you, mayor and council, for allowing us the opportunity to come and celebrate with you. St. Elizabeth is always excited to recognize the collaboration between your providers and our providers that directly impact stroke outcomes. So as you know, Target Stroke is a national quality improvement initiative that was launched by the American Heart Association back in 2010. This initiative focused on improving acute ischemic stroke care by reducing the time that stroke patients receive appropriate treatment once they arrive at our hospital. Now, in Phase 3, there's a continued focus to align efforts across the entire continuum, including the EMS. Best practices implemented throughout a system of care are key factors in optimizing outcomes for stroke patients. Timely response, rapid identification and treatment, transport, pre-hospital notification, and effective handoff communication from the field to the hospital are key links in the stroke chain of survival. As a team, your expertise in the field will assist us in providing the best care for our patients and the community. Florence EMS personnel were involved in the transport of a stroke patient leading to the fastest Dordan needle delivery of Tenecta Place for the St. Elizabeth Healthcare System in the month of February 2025. So on behalf of St. Elizabeth Healthcare and the AHA, we would like to recognize them for the exceptional care of this patient that led to the delivery of drug within 38 minutes of arrival to the Florence facility. This truly takes a team effort with collaboration starting in the field to us. Sammy Corbin and Josh Abdon. We have a certificate and a brain pen to present to you tonight. And again, thank you for your collaboration and exceptional service to make this happen. He talked about partnerships, and I'm eluding further. Partnerships and collaboration. Thank you.
Sammy and Josh.
Wear your pink brain pen proud.
Josh, don't go anywhere. I think she's going to get a picture. Thank you all. It's always a pleasure to see you all from St. Elizabeth. Next, I would like to read a proclamation and thank all of the men and women who are here from our fire and EMS department. And this is a proclamation for them. Whereas the safety and well-being of the residents of Florence, Kentucky is of the utmost importance to the city of Florence and its leadership. And whereas International Firefighters Day is observed on May 4th, it is a time to honor and remember the sacrifices made by firefighters around the world and to recognize their commitment to protecting life, property, and the environment. And whereas the dedicated members of the Florence Fire EMS Department who serve as both firefighters and emergency medical providers exemplify courage, compassion, and professionalism responding to emergencies with skill and selflessness. And whereas National Emergency Medical Services Week observed this year from May 18 through May 24th, provides an opportunity to recognize the paramedics and EMTs within our Florence Fire EMS Department who deliver lifesaving medical care in times of crisis. And whereas the dual role firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics of the Florence Fire EMS Department are vital to our community, to our community's public safety system, and their commitment to excellence reflects the highest standards of service. And whereas the city of Florence expresses deep gratitude for the men and women who stand ready every day to protect and serve with courage, strength, and dedication, now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Julie Abashan, mayor of the city of Florence, and on behalf of the members of Florence City Council, do hereby proclaim May 4th as firefighter day and the week of May 18 through the 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week and further extend the appreciation to members of the city of Florence Fire EMS department. Thank you. And since we have, do have quite a crowd of our personnel, they'd like to come forward. And then if council would join me for the photo. Next, we have a presentation, and I'd like to have, is Jason? Oh, there you are. Okay. I was like, where did you go? So our finance director, Jason Lewis, to introduce the topic. We're talking about our investment...
and appreciate you taking a few minutes to hear what I have to say. As Jason mentioned, I work at Morton Capital, working with local governments in Tennessee and Kentucky. It is something that our company specializes in doing. So I certainly appreciate, you know, this chance to talk with you. A little bit about me, before I moved down to Tennessee, I actually initially grew up here in Northern Kentucky, went to Covington Catholic. And the rest of those pictures are kind of telling some big events for me in life. When I was up in Chicago, I had a very, very cute dog, still do. And he was basically the reason that I met my wife. She thought he was really cute, wanted to come pet him. So it kind of worked out for me pretty well. We ended up getting married at my alma mater at Notre Dame. And then about a year ago, we had our first child, a baby girl, which you see over there on the far right. So that's just a little bit about me and where I come from and how, you know, I ended up being here with you tonight. Before we get a little bit at the end into some investments, I did want to go a little deeper into some things going on in the broader economy. As I'm sure most of you have seen with headlines, there's been a lot recently going on with tariffs. At the beginning of the month, the Trump administration did pass or put out there significant tariff increases. Those have shortly after that been paused for 90 days, with the main exception being continuing escalating tariffs with China. Of course, there's a lot of back and forth about the impact of that, the pros and cons, but the two things that we have seen so far have been a lot of uncertainty that's been created for businesses, just not knowing what those tariffs will ultimately look like, as well as some potential inflationary pressure from those tariffs as well. Stock market, obviously, I would say that ties more towards the business side of things. As you can see, at the beginning of the Trump administration, the stock market was about as high as it's ever been. There was a lot of anticipation of it being a very pro-business administration, along with potential tax cuts that would also be helpful. However, with recently with tariffs especially being kind of front and center in the news, the stock market has come down quite a bit. You can actually see that big dip during that week when the tariffs were initially announced and how the market has positively responded now that they've been paused for 90 days as well. Inflation is kind of the other aspect that tariffs might be directly impacting. As we saw over time, inflation has kind of become something that there's a target of 2%. That wasn't official until 2012, but the Fed has been treating it that way since the mid 1990s. And more recently, it certainly had a massive spike during the pandemic, but has largely been coming down, getting closer and closer to that stated 2% goal. I mentioned the Fed, and for those who are not familiar, they basically have a dual mandate, which is to get maximum employment as well as keep prices stable or rein in inflation. The way they do that most directly is by using the Fed funds rate. It's an overnight rate that banks lend to each other, and that's the only one that they directly control. They can put other recommendations out there, but that is certainly the main way or the main tool that they can use. As a general rule, they will tend to raise rates when they want to slow down the economy and restrict growth. And then conversely, they will tend to cut rates, make them lower, to help stimulate the economy if things are going a little bit slow. So this is a chart showing about the last 15 years or so of what that rate has looked like. As you can see, coming out of the financial crisis in the late 2000s, rates were kept very, very low in an attempt to stimulate the economy and bring things around. They did briefly start to go up, but then almost immediately went right back down as we entered the pandemic. And now, as Jason alluded to, we're coming out of the pandemic, rates have gone up quite a bit for some time, but now are starting to be cut again. Currently, the recommended range is between 4.25 and 4.5%. But as you can see, it can move up and down relatively quickly when the Fed feels it's warranted. Now, probably the more interesting thing that ties to investments is not just the Fed funds overnight rate, but also interest rates across the curve. For quite some time now, basically since 2022, we've been in an environment that had an inverted yield curve. The technical definition of that is when two-year rates are higher than 10-year rates. And even though we have moved past that technical definition, as you can see on that chart, there is still quite a bit of inversion where it goes down for a while before then rising back up. So we saw where we're at today. Is that normal? The answer is frankly, no. So you can see here, that's about five years ago in 2020. That's a much more normal shape that we tend to see for interest rates across different maturities. If Jason clicks a few more times, this is 10 years ago, 15 years ago, and 20 years ago. So the magnitude can change, but generally speaking, the relationship or shape of it is going to be upward sloping. And that should make sense, right? If you, as an individual, had money that you were going to lend to someone, if they're going to pay you back in a day, you're probably not going to charge them very much. But if they're going to pay you back over several years, you probably want a little bit more compensation for being without your funds for a while. Same thing in the market. Each time the Fed meets, they of course give some statements to the public, but they also, every quarter, publish what's called the dot plot. And I know a lot's going on here with this screen, but the line I would want you to focus on is the green line. That's the median expectation from the different Fed governors on where rates will be going forward into the future. And as you can see, back in March, prior to any of the tariffs discussions, they were projecting two rate cuts each of the next two years, and then ultimately settling in around 3%. Now, this can certainly change over time, but since they're the ones controlling it, they're at least worth listening to and considering what their, their approach is. So how does this all apply to the City of Florence? Through my discussions with Jason and getting to know a little bit more about where you guys are at, Florence is in a really strong position because most of their assets right now are in short-term liquid investments. And as we saw on those graphs, those rates have been rather high for quite some time on those short rates. The inverted yield curve has allowed you to have those really attractive returns while maintaining maximum flexibility with your funds as well. As we've begun to see, though, with the Fed beginning to cut rates and at least messaging the potential for more, it might make sense to take a look at some different strategies going forward to be prepared for some of that changing environment. And then just briefly about us, as I said, we work with local governments. I think the main thing that sets us apart is our proactive consultative approach. Because we set it up in such a way to have people in the area that they're covering, we're able to do things like this and come in person. It's not just Zoom calls or phone calls or emails. We like to be face-to-face with the people we're working with. And as a broker, we have no management or signup fees, which I think is also great for you or any of our customers because frankly, you only pay us when you're using us. So you're not ever feeling this false obligation to use us more than necessary. It's only when it's appropriate that, that we get paid. Some of the products that we deal in are things that are already approved by state statutes. So we're of course never going to be showing you anything that's out of bounds that would cause some problems with auditors or anyone else. Those include money market funds, US Treasuries and agencies, brokered CDs, and then to a lesser extent, but occasionally, municipal bonds, corporate bonds as well. And one of those things about being proactive is we do like to set ahead of time appointments to take a deep dive on your investments, make sure that we're making it a priority versus a lot of other brokers. You'll see a little bit more of a bond of the day approach where they're just trying to get a quick sale on a given day. There's not much strategy to it. There's not much thought to it. We try to be a little bit more thoughtful and measured in our approach with that. That's all I have for you. I appreciate everyone's time. And if there's any questions, I'm of course happy to answer them as well.
I just want to point out that we did revise our investment policy not that long ago. And it does spell out the types of investments that are allowed by KRS here in Kentucky. And many of those, you had, most of those, I think you, you had, they were listed. So we cannot just invest in anything. We have to be very conservative. This is a taxpayer's money. We really want to get a return for our money that's, you know, appropriate. But we also are very conservative in our approach as well. Limit our risk. So thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, everyone.
Next, we will have the first reading. It's an ordinance, it's 09, 2025. It's an ordinance adopting and approving a zoning map amendment from Commercial 2 to Commercial Services 3 and a conditional use permit for an approximate 0.35 acre area located at 6809 Burlington Pike, Florence, Kentucky, to allow the existing business, I'm sorry, to allow the existing building to be occupied by a medical cannabis dispensary business. This is Bluegrass Canacare LLC. The effect of this ordinance is to allow a zoning map amendment from Commercial 2 to Commercial Services 3 and a conditional use permit for an approximate 0.35 acre area located at 6809 Burlington Pike, Florence, Kentucky, to allow the existing building to be occupied by a medical cannabis dispensary business subject to conditions. The full text of ordinance 09, 2025, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the office of the City Clerk of the City of Florence, Kentucky, and the Florence Government Center, 8100 Yewen Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky, during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve?
Summa.
Ms. Wingo.
Second.
Second, Mr. Nguyen. This was an item that was brought forward from the Boone County Planning Commission. They did approve with conditions. They recommended that this go to, or this went to the Planning and Zoning Committee of the City of Florence. They did recommend this be approved and brought forward to council with no need for an additional public hearing. And we did discuss it at our last meeting. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Cable?
No.
Mayor, motion passes 5-1.
Next is ordinance 010, 2025. This is an ordinance adopting and approving a change of concept development plan and variances in a Commercial 3 district for an approximate 0.56 acre area located at 7303 Turfway Road, Florence, Kentucky, to allow the development of a 543 square foot drive-through only coffee shop and a 277 square foot remote storage cooler accessory structure and variances to, one, reduce the buffer yard setback from 50 feet to 37 feet, and two, reduce the buffer yard width from 10 feet to seven feet along the west property line, five feet along the south property line, and eight feet along the east property line. This is the Brutine Kentucky LLC project. This effect of this ordinance is to allow a change of a concept development plan and variances in a Commercial 3, Commercial Services C3 district for an approximate 0.56 acre site located at 7303 Turfway Road, Florence, Kentucky, to allow the development of a 543 square foot drive-through only coffee shop and a 277 square foot remote storage cooler accessory structure and variances to, one, reduce the front yard setback from 50 feet to 37 feet, and two, reduce the buffer yard width from 10 feet to seven feet along the west property line and five feet along the south property line and eight feet along the east property line. The full text of ordinance 010, 2025, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the office of the City Clerk, City of Florence, Kentucky, 8100 Yewen Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky, during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve?
Summa.
Ms. Wingo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Schneider. Again, this is the same situation as the ordinance before. It was recommended from the Boone County Planning Commission. It was brought to the Boone County, or to the City of Florence Planning and Zoning Committee, which recommended no need for an additional public hearing and approval. We did discuss this, and this is the first reading. So is there any other further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Cable?
No.
Mayor, motion passes 5-1.
Next item is municipal order MO2, 2025. And if we could have Chief Mallory discuss this.
Thank you, Mayor. This municipal order is to give a surplus cruiser to Rockcastle County Sheriff's Department down in Kentucky. Our police department on a yearly basis is fortunate enough to have budgeted money for the purchase of new cruisers. These cruisers are rotated into the fleet and assigned to officers to have a cruiser with high mileage or mechanical issues put back into either surplus or the, take on the pool cars. This previous, the previous year's spare cruisers are then surplus and are placed in auction or used by other city departments. This year, Rockcastle County Sheriff's Department has reached out to us and is in need of a cruiser. Sheriff Shannon Franklin stated that his budget is very limited and that his agency is the primary law enforcement within the county. He said that we are attempting to serve 316-plus square miles, 16,000-plus residents and the occupants of the 96,000 vehicles that pass through their county daily on I-75 within an adequate, with, with an inadequate aging fleet. The only funding for his department is through office fees. Therefore, his current budget does not allow for the purchase or replacement of police cruisers. And we would like to help out Rockcastle County Sheriff's Department by donating one of our surplus cruisers. If it's a 2017 Ford Interceptor that we would be, it's already been stripped of all of our markings and everything and just donated to them. If you don't know where Rockcastle County is, it's down 75 and you get off at Mount Vernon. And it's the, pretty much the main thoroughfare for anybody going to Cumberland. So their cars, their traffic is going to increase substantially in the next couple months, next couple weeks. And one of their best cruisers just died on a prisoner transport and died in Adair County, two counties over. So we're just asking if we can donate this car to Rockcastle County.
Any questions? I have municipal order MO2, 2025. It's a municipal order declaring one Ford Interceptor police vehicle as surplus property, approving its transfer to the Rockcastle County Sheriff's Department, authorizing the execution of a transfer agreement with respect thereto. Is there a motion to approve?
Summa.
Mr. Nguyen?
Second.
Second by Ms. Whalen. Any discussion?
Roll call vote, please. Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Cable?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0.
I believe we may have a future request similar to this one.
does not allow for the purchase or replacement of police cruisers. And we would like to help out in Rockcastle County Sheriff's Department by donating one of our surplus cruisers. If it's a 2017 Ford Interceptor that we would be, it's already been stripped of all of our markings and everything, and just donate it to them. If you don't know where Rockcastle County is, it's down 75, and you get off at Mount Vernon. And it's the, pretty much the main thoroughfare for anybody going to Cumberland. So their cars, their traffic is going to increase substantially in the next couple months, next couple weeks. And one of their best cruisers just died on a prisoner transport and died in Adair County, two counties over. So we're just asking if we can donate this car to Rockcastle County.
Any questions? I have Municipal Order MO2/2025. It's a municipal order declaring one Ford Interceptor police vehicle as surplus property, approving its transfer to the Rockcastle County Sheriff's Department, authorizing the execution of a transfer agreement with respect thereto. Is there a motion to approve?
So no.
Mr. Nguyen?
Second.
Second by Ms. Whalen. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Cable?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0.
I believe we may have a future request similar to this one for another community that's been affected by the flood. So we will work on getting that to you at another meeting. But it would, again, be another vehicle that would be surplus. For the mayor's report, just a reminder, spring cleanup is underway through this Sunday, April 27th. As a Florence resident, please bring your unwanted trash and debris, excluding household hazardous waste, to the Public Services Facility located at 7850 Tanner's Lane for disposal. You must show proof of residency, and you can call our Public Services Department at 859-647-5416 for additional information. The Florence Police Department is participating in the National Prescription Drug Takeback Day this Saturday, April 26th, from 10 till 2. There will be two drop-off locations, the north parking lot of the Florence Government Center and Florence Kroger Marketplace, 7685 Mall Road. No liquids, needles, ointments, or syringes will be accepted. Call the Florence Police Department at 859-647-5420 for more information. Our Florence Aquatic Center discount memberships are on sale now. You can purchase online on the city website. If you prefer to buy in person, you can purchase the discounted memberships to the Florence Aquatic Center at the Florence Aquatic Center from April 28th to April 30th, from 3:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And I believe that SwimSafe staff will be on hand to do that. And then after April 30th, prices will be up to the regular price. Applications are still open for the Annual Public Works Academy that runs June 9th through July 25th, 2025. The application deadline is May 9th. You can contact the Public Services Department at 859-647-5416. This is a great program geared at high school and college-age participants to learn some skills that would be transferable into our Public Services Department if they chose to work with us. Our citywide photo contest begins May 1st, and it runs through May 15th. You can email your photos to photocontest@florence-ky.gov. Contact the Administration Department at 859-647-8177 for more information. The City of Florence is now accepting applications for participants in the upcoming Memorial Day Parade, taking place on Monday, May 26th. The parade will begin at 10 a.m. at the Boone County High School and conclude at the Florence Government Center. Following the parade, a Memorial Day ceremony will be held at the Boone County Veterans Memorial located at the Florence Government Center. The deadline to register for parade entry is Friday, May 9th. To apply or learn more, visit the City of Florence website or contact Community Services Coordinator Tina Benjamin at 859-647-5425. And just a reminder that there is no council meeting next Tuesday, April 29th, as it is a fifth Tuesday. Is anyone on council desire recognition? Any department heads? Anyone in the audience? There is a need for a closed session. So request a motion to go into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.8101B, acquisition/sale of real property where publicity would be likely to affect the value of property to be acquired for public use or to be sold by the city, and pursuant to KRS 61.8101C, litigation proposed or pending against or behalf of the city, and KRS 81.8101G, discussions between the city and representatives of a business entity where open discussions would jeopardize the siting, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Mr. Nguyen?
Second.
Second, Ms. Wingo. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We will return to this room to adjourn. We do not anticipate any further business when we return.